15th, 2019, Village of Vernon Hills Board Meeting to Order. Liz, please conduct roll call.
President Byrne, Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Thank you, Liz. This time I'm requesting a motion be made for the appointment of a President Pro Tem.
Mr. Clerk, at this time I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem for the remainder of this Village Board Meeting.
Second it.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne. Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
All right, we have a quorum and the meeting has started. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
You didn't learn, you're like my kid. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on the agenda? And if you could state your name and address.
Steve Albert. Address?
Address, please, yes.
Twenty-one Harbor Court in Vernon Hills. I just wanted to make known about an exchange that happened between one of our trustees and one of our residents of Vernon Hills.
Could you speak directly into the mic or there's some handheld ones if that's more comfortable for you?
Okay, how's this? Is that better?
It's on. I think it's on. Tap it and just see. Tap the top.
How's that? No?
How about now?
That was better.
Let's try that. Okay, anyways, I'll talk louder. Anyways, there was an exchange between one of our trustees and a Vernon Hills resident that was very upsetting to me. And I think it was important, it's important to make sure everybody knows. It was conveyed on Facebook by a Vernon Hills resident that the trustee singled her out and sent her a private message through Facebook at 5:15 in the morning, trying to state his case about this whole opt-in, opt-out thing, which I felt was very inappropriate. You guys are supposed to just sit back and not, and let us have the opinion, I thought, okay? Anyways, he stated that she missed the point about the Facebook poll, that she, that he has a right to voice his opinion. And the resident then angrily, I would be too at 5:15 in the morning, pointed out how the meeting was one-sided and that both sides were not properly represented. The trustee then responded to her by, believe it or not, saying that she had not done her homework and suggested that she move out of town. This is what he said to the resident, okay? I couldn't believe this would happen, so I just wanted to make sure you guys know about this. And obviously, the trustee knows who did it, you know, the trustee knows. And this Facebook message exchange was not solicited by the resident, okay? He started it. And I just find this wrong at many levels, and I urge you not to let this slide. My suggestions would be, he certainly needs to publicly apologize to the wrong resident. She did nothing wrong. He should certainly recuse himself from voting on this pot shop issue because he's clearly stated his case. And he just seriously should, you know, maybe take a sensitivity class because the way he handled it, I thought was totally inappropriate, okay? And I'm not alone in my outrage. This is ju, it's not just an opt-in, opt-out issue, that's besides the case. I think this is about a person who I felt abused his position as trustee, as an elected official. And I don't think, any trustee should ever tell a resident to get out of town for having a difference of opinion, okay? He should go by the will of the people, not his personal moral agenda, which this is turning out to be. I'm only going by, now, I'm only going by what the resident said, and she actually showed me. The trustee was asked to state his side, but no response. And I give the Vernon Hills resident a lot of credit for not backing down and not letting this trustee try to apparently bully her. Now, if any, you know, I'm going by what this woman said, and if this is not, if anything happens that it's not accurate, I'll be the first to apologize. But I'm hoping you agree that we need to hear from the trustee on his side of what he was thinking so we can put closure on this, okay? For the record, I've never met the trustee in question, and the resident that was wronged, in my opinion, I never met either, until just last week. Okay, and I just wanted to make sure that you know about this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please use. Trustee, Trustee Markwart.
I'm the individual.
Right.
And there are two sides to the story.
Right, that's why I wanted to hear.
In the, in the Facebook of how it was going, my name was mentioned clearly under. Michael M. Markwart, from this individual, who stated that I, in fact, was one-sided and that I was for.
Well, this was after the facts.
This, correct. Situation was, I'm sorry, I get up at 4:30 every day to go to work. I work two jobs of it. So, yes, I was upset about it. Should I have called at that time? I was doing paperwork and it irked me. So I did. Thing is, though, you didn't see everything in that was said. I said that you're, she was missing the point.
Right.
And that I'm one individ, I have the right of mind, but there are twenty-eight, over twenty-eight thousand residents in this village, that I, as a trustee, are responsible to listening to their side. I did not gather sides to say anything for or against it. She then brought it on and basically, be honest, to a point that she didn't tell you, that she felt the meeting that we had at the high school was a joke. And that the decision was clearly marked on all these trustees up here, of what their decision was going to be. She then stated that the, that the village is run by the town clown. So it was one insult after another.
This was after you initiated this whole conversation?
No, I said to, I said to see the point.
I would probably be a little upset, too.
Understandable. But let me go a little further. I did not, did not state that because of her views, move out of town. I said, and if you want, I'll read it verbatim on here, you're welcome to see it.
She had not done her homework.
Uh, I, let me, let me read what I have, please. I've let you speak, now let my side come. State to the individual, you have not done your homework, but you have already made your decision. And this is what I stated. My suggestion, if you don't like what's going on, move out of town. Is it directly to the point, it'd be like telling you something, I didn't say it as a point of a bully or anything, get out of town. I say, if you don't like the decision, then move on. If I don't like what I'm watching on TV, I turn it off.
Wow.
So that's what you perceive or what she perceives, it's not what I perceive out of it. Again, when you're to a point of insulting somebody, and she was the first one to call out in the Facebook neighbors and using my name, I have not voiced my opinion, nor have I stood up here on record to state which side am I on. So I, I did not.
Well, you did, by, by voting on that poll, you did voice your opinion. There was a poll, opt-in, opt-out, you voted.
Correct, as an individual, I did. As an individual, which each of us have our own. But I did say in a meeting that, that what I do is, I do listen to the people. I make a comment clearly. I have one mouth, two ears. I do listen to people. I've been in this town forty years.
Why did you initiate a conversation at 5:15 in the morning?
Because, be honest, that's the ti, I get up at 4:30 every day.
Okay.
My, I do my work, any paperwork that I have. I saw the Facebook on the, on Deer Path, and she pointed out, she directed it upon me, Michael M. Markwart. And I didn't say anything to anybody on which way I would sway on this, but she already put in her point out of it. I don't know why she did that. Was I a point of saying, should I not have done it? Yeah, I should not have called at 5:15 in the morning, but unfortunately, I'm, I've always an early riser, and that's what I did. I was going over and it, it irked me. It did irk me. But I'm not afraid to tell everybody what I said. And you're welcome to read this verbatim if you wish.
I'd like to see that. Well, I, I can get it, it doesn't matter.
Well, we can, we can do that another time. I think we need to.
But I just want to clear that, that there are two sides to a story.
Right.
And that was mine.
But you, as an elected official, initiated it, and I thought it was handled improperly.
Okay.
So we agree to disagree.
But you've, you've expressed your opinion, he's expressed his, we need to move on, we've got a lot on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, well.
Thank you.
I hope you guys take into consideration, I'm not, I'm not going to let this drop, I think she at least owes, has owed an apology.
Okay.
In the way it's handled.
Thank you, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? No, okay. Chief, is Bob going to be here tonight, or?
Excuse me? Couldn't hear you?
We have the proclamation for.
No, I'm sorry, he's not able to come tonight. His last day was Friday night, and I'll see him again, so I'll be sure to pass it on to him.
Go ahead and read the.
Please do.
Because if he was coming later, I was going to delay this. We have a proclamation for Officer Robert W. Lynch. Whereas Robert W. Lynch began employment with the Village of Vernon Hills Police Department as a police officer on October 6th, 1989, and has served the village in that capacity for thirty years. Bob served as an advanced evidence technician, where his meticulous collection of evidence led to successful conclusions in a variety of criminal cases. Bob served on the department's first bicycle unit, a program that has enhanced community presence, safety, and cohesiveness throughout its years of existence. Bob served as a field training officer, where he helped shape, form, and train the core of police officers still working for this department today. Bob served as the officer, an officer in charge, during which he assisted with supervisory duties of field operations throughout the department. Bob accumulated numerous letters of appreciation and commendations from department, from the department, outside agencies, and citizens throughout his tenured career. Bob has been a great asset to the Vernon Hills Police Department throughout his career and has served with professionalism and distinction. The residents of the Village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by Bob's service to the community as a police officer during the past thirty years. Therefore, now be it proclaimed that the President of the Board of Trustees and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to Robert W. Lynch their gratitude and thanks for his thirty years of service to the community and the law enforcement profession. Passed and approved this fifteenth day of October, 2019. Did you want to add anything, or?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just point out that Bob, excuse me, Bob is a fine example of the strong team of officers we have here at Vernon Hills. He served thirty years, worked nights for a good portion of that. I think, I think that his family's going to be somewhat shocked and pleasantly surprised to have him back during daylight hours as he begins his, his well-deserved retirement. So we'll be keeping in touch with him, and I know he appreciates the recognition of the board. Thank you.
Our next item, the appointment of Todd Renahan to the Police Pension Trustee. We're going to pull that so that that can be done when the mayor's here, correct?
Understood. Please pull it.
Anybody else have a speaking part tonight? No? Okay, then the next would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through G? Yes, sir.
Will it be, are you speaking part on this, or?
Well, that's on, that's supposed to be, should that be pulled then, or?
Sure.
Why are you? That's on.
No, that's on.
Yeah. There's nothing, there's nothing referencing the insurance on the omnibus, right? So omnibus is items A through G.
Motion to approve.
Maybe we have a motion a second. Any questions other than that? All right, hearing none, a roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne. President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is unfinished business, approval and passage of ordinance 2019-137, and ordinance authorizing approval of the Fourth Amendment to leave the lease agreement for the White Deer Run Golf Course.
Thank you very much. At the September 17th Village Board meeting, this was presented, it would be the Fourth Amendment to the lease for White Deer Run Golf Course. Village Board gave some good direction and comments, and staff followed up with them with the tenant. So the three issues that were discussed was keeping the local discount, but supporting the first-come, first-served approach, and that has been amended in the agreement. And then there was conversation about inclusion of more metrics on the buyout provisions. We spent some time with PLOD, looking at their buyout provisions. The comment was to make the operators whole, and when we looked at that, making them whole would have been substantially greater than what would be palatable to the board. So they fell back from that position, and what is included is a lower figure in terms of the buyout than what would make them whole. Specifically, year 2029, 4.5 million, and then incrementally every five years, it would drop by half a million dollars. So that was included. And then we also added a future tree replacement provision to add, to expand the replacement of trees beyond the initial planting of a hundred trees within the first two years, should it be warranted. So that was added to the agreement, too. Should you have any, any questions? Representatives are here to answer any questions, and I'll help where possible.
Okay, Trustee Schultz.
Yeah, I've kind of got a problem. Maybe you want to step up. Basically, the original lease, at the end of the original lease, there, the buyout was done. There was no buyout. In other words, we own the golf course lock, stock, and barrel. And the reason that we're looking to extend the lease is, A, we do understand that the developer did not get all their funds back due to a multitude of factors, most of them not under their control. And I have no problem with extending the lease, but I do have a problem with burdening a future board with a buyout, when the buyout really should not be part and parcelous. I was looking for that information to give this board and future boards a comfort level that, yeah, we're doing the right thing with regard to the developer, but also, the reason that we're extending the lease is we don't want to operate that golf course at this juncture in time. Maybe in the future, a future board does. But I'd like to see the lease without any buyouts, because in theory, there shouldn't be any buyout clauses, but the lease should be guaranteed for significant periods of time. Twenty-five is a little long, but I could, I could be cajoled into doing that. I thought maybe two tens and a, and another ten or something to that end. But as this is written tonight, I'm going to vote no on this, just because from a business standpoint, we have clear title to the golf course at the end, at the normal end of this original agreement.
That's correct. And the comment I wrote down from the meeting I attended on September 3rd, you had asked for buyouts every five years. And you said, and your comment.
I was looking for what the.
And your comment was what I wrote down, based upon our hardship on what would make us whole.
Right.
So that number is substantial.
Right.
So I went back to staff and said, if I put that in there, what the real number is, I don't think you would, you would like that. So we backed that down significantly. So the, so the city would have the option, if they so elected, to buy out. I can eliminate the provision altogether if that's what you'd, what you'd like.
That, that is what I would prefer, that there, you know, whatever the lease is, that there is no additional ca, cash payout required by the village. And I'm willing to get into a reasonably extended period of time, because you're doing a fine job managing it, we don't have the resources to manage it. And in fact, I'm looking in the future to leverage your operation of that course potentially with the operation of this one, but that's my own.
Sure.
Personal opinion, not, does not represent any of the other board members, nor does it represent anything that staff has thought of, or is pursuing, or is likely to pursue without further direction from this board.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The way, the way this buyout is written is it's purely at the option of the village. So in other words, in 2029, I can't come to you and say, well, you have to buy me out now. I don't have the option to call the village on that. It's only if the village decides they want to take control of the property. It's their exclusive, exclusive option. So I, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that the way this is drafted is I can come to the village and the city at some point in time and say, where's, where's my check? Quite the other way around, the city can come to me and say, well, you know, we have grander visions now, and, you know, we want to do something else, so we're going to give you notice, and we're going to buy you out. So it's.
Well, part and parcel of the problem is that the developer had a num, now, I don't know what his current financial structuring is with regard to the outstanding loans that he had acquired, but they were on a personal level. And at some juncture, that developer has all mortal beings, is no longer going to be in this realm, but will be in another realm. And I wish that, not for a long period of time, but with that being said, the, the inheritors of the loans and the financial requirements and obligations, and the kind of the fiduciary responsibility incumbent on that lease is going to transfer to someone else, and someone else may in fact wish to unburden themselves, because this is not a primary element of the developer's businesses. That's why, at this juncture, I have no problem extending the lease, but I do have a problem with there being any buyout, should you decide to walk away or whatever.
I, I could remove it, but again, I can't, I can't force the village on any of these buyout provisions to give me any money. It's exclusively a city option. So if you want it gone, I.
I, I guess I'm looking for a little bit of legal advice here.
I have a question. This lease, the proposed amendment takes the lease to 2049. The buy, the last buyout is 2044. So that's, if the village wants to take this back at year 20, you, you'd have to pay $3 million to, to take, to eliminate the last five years of the lease. In 2049, when the lease ends, it's, the land is free and clear to the village.
Well, the, the land is free and clear in whatever the original expiration date is of the original agreement, 2025?
2024, end of 2024.
Right, so.
No, but isn't, to clarify, at the end of the, at 2049, it would also be.
2049, there's no buyout.
It would be turnkey, it would be.
There's no cost.
Right.
The last payment would be 2044. And, and, and Trustee Schultz, these buyouts come every five years, I, I think, to our advantage as a result of a 25-year lease. That's the term the staff has worked with, and in order to alleviate concerns about that kind of a lease, the staff, I think, has built in four, four buyouts, years five, 10, 15, and 20. If we want to restructure this to, to a 10, a 10, and a 5, I, I think that's a different conversation, but at the end of this 25 years, no payment will be due in owing.
Yeah, what, the way I'm looking at it is, these are very expensive termination payments, for, if lack of a better term, instead of a buyout, call it a termination payment, an early termination payment. These are rather expensive. Like I said, I was looking more to provide a level of justification of why the developer should be allowed and encouraged to continue to operate the facility to, in fact, gain a return on their original investment of some 22 years ago.
Well, I think that comes from the fact that when it was originally built, we, correct me if I remember, we didn't put up a dime, basically, all we put up was the land, and.
And we gave them the right to operate for 25 years.
But he, but he built the course, also put up the money to build the clubhouse to a, to a standard beyond what we were originally thinking, and, and.
That I can't speak to, but what I can speak to is that.
No, I, I, that's why.
And their financial, their financial plan.
But that's why I'm explaining it to you, because I was in on the original.
I know, but their financial plan was to recoup those funds over the 25-year horizon.
And I, and I think everybody figured that it, the total investment that Mr. PLOD had put in would be recouped by 2024, but the, the golf course wasn't the, the cash cow that everybody thought it was going to be, because things slowed down after 2000s.
There was some financial problems, yeah.
But again, those, these are some significant cash payouts to terminate the lease.
Okay, is there?
I, I just make a proposal, I mean, if, if that's the issue, I think the, personally, I think what you asked for last meeting is, with these buyouts, is to the advantage of the village. If you don't want them, just take them out.
No, I, is, is anybody else? I'm, I'm fine with.
I think we do, I think we do want them.
Yeah, and I'm fine with.
I think it's to our advantage. The, the.
It is.
Value or the cost to terminate, I, I'm not sure how those numbers were calculated, I was not part of that. If you want to see more relative to the due diligence done in that regard, then perhaps we table this and get more information to the board for a final vote. But, but the buyouts, the termination clauses are definitely to your advantage.
And, and I can see that. But again, you know, these are numbers that were equivalent to the original buyout numbers that were over the course of the 25-year original lease.
Trustee Markwart.
I would like to table it. I'm, for the terminology of the buyout, I think, I just want a little bit more explanation of how both parties technically to, it should be to, to the point, as ourself, the village, in terminating them, that there's got to be a timeframe that, that's allowed for you for protection for you. So I, I'd actually like to table this and critique this a little bit more in the, in the wordage. I'm not fine with how this is, but with some of the ways that it's phrased.
Trustee Oppenheim.
So I wanted to ask, I'm a little bit confused as well, is why is it to our advantage to have those buyouts versus just continuing the way it was when there was going to be no buyout?
I, I can answer that. If you're going to agree to a 25-year lease, I, I If you're going to agree to a 25-year lease, I, I think you'd want some control relative to terminating that lease and not having it go 25 years in the event, let's say this operator starts to run the course in a way that you're, you're not happy with, and you want to take it over. It's, it's, it's an option, I think, that's necessary, given the timeframes. If you were in shorter-term leases, trustee Oppenheim, I, I think a termination clause, and it's purely optional, keep that in mind, you don't have to exercise this. But over the course of 25 years, I, I think you'd want some ability to grab your property back in the event things are not gonna-
Yeah, I, I understand that.
That's all.
Certainly, to have some option if things turn south, but yeah, I guess I'm a little confused as to how we really got to this point, that we were gonna offer up more money than we would have been offering up, instead of just, just doing shorter segmental leases, how, how did that come to be?
I guess I have to throw a comment in there. It's, it's worrisome for me as the operator to have the rug pulled out for me a couple of years down the road, because right, I'm making investments there as I go along.
Okay.
You know, roofs need to get replaced, equipment needs to get replaced, I'm redoing bunkers, I'm redoing greens. So let's say I redo my greens and-
Two years later, we say we want it back.
And you say, well, this looks, this looks nice, you know? We think we're gonna operate this now. Well, I'm not only out everything that I've previously invested, but I'm out what I've been investing moving forward. So, you know, it's, it's that delicate balance. There's, there is audited financials on file with the village, if, you know, you care to see the nu- what the number is that we have into this right now, it's substantially greater than any of these buyout figures proposed. And again, I'm fine if the whole provision goes away, because as an operator, that gives me security that I have something to operate.
Village Engineer Brown.
So I think there's general consensus that we want to have a long-term lease. I, I think that's important. I think what we're discussing is, if we have this long-term lease, what happens should, should there be termination? They have showed us financial numbers that show something greater than these buyouts. And if we don't have a buyout provision for a long-term lease, my concern is, if we do get into a dispute and a termination, how do we resolve in a dollar amount this, to resolve this and make them whole? And I, I, I guess what my suggestion or, or thought is, having this in there does have value to the village. That's at least my recommendation.
Trustee Takaoka.
No, I, I think I got an understanding. I mean, he's gotta be protected, they've got a big investment here, and absolutely. I guess the, the termination payments, how were they calculated exactly? It's not a full buyout of the remainder of the lease, is that the way-
Well, what it is, is it's basically a buyout of the, of the assets-
Assets of their-
Which is the golf course, the clubhouse, the driving range-
Oh, so what they-
A substantially reduced figure for what has been invested in all the facilities out there. There's maintenance barns-
Okay, so it's not like a fair market value, or someone comes in and assesses-
No.
Then you know what, I, I have to agree with, you know, as far as having to buy out that concept every five years, because they've gotta be protected, absolutely.
Then, any other comments to that? And then we either have a motion to table or a motion to approve.
Yeah, remind me, what, what's the current timeline? It wasn't every five years, was it? What, what's in, what's in the document there?
It starts in 2029, because we have four years left in our current lease, and then the comment from last meeting is do a buyout every five years. So then I do the first buyout in year 2029, then every five years.
Every five years after.
Keeps going.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
Yeah, we did.
And I'm not against it, I just want to critique the wordage. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Have your concerns been delayed, or?
Not- Yeah, so-
Jim, why don't you-
Jim, why don't you ask your comments? Would you prefer that we were fine with what we have, just to go over to critique it more?
I don't have the background as to these numbers. I, I didn't negotiate the, the termination fees. I, I think that was done with staff, so I can't tell you these numbers are, are fair. I, I think Dave could probably comment a little bit better on that. To the extent the board wants to see more background for these numbers, I, I would suggest a motion to table, so you're comfortable. But if, if based on what, what Mr. Brown states, we can get a vote to approve, then, I mean, that's, can be considered.
See, I'm not against these. I just want to critique it a little bit.
This is not time-sensitive. We want to get this deal done correctly. If there's questions that the board has and we need to supply additional information, it's acceptable to table it. I think we'll end up in the same place, but if you guys have questions, let us answer your questions, and we'll get you more answers on precisely what the additional numbers are. I will share with you, he has shared those numbers, I don't have them in front of us, but they're substantially higher than what's in front of us, substantially higher.
So you mean a to-make-them-whole buyout would be more than the numbers in this current buyout?
By long shot. If you have those numbers, please share them.
Okay. So Dave, you, you've already assessed these numbers already, correct?
Yes.
So do you guys need to see what he's assessed already?
Well, we, we've seen it.
I, I think, I don't know, if nothing else, it feels a little rushed. And like Dave said, we're not in a hurry. I'm, I'm very, very satisfied with the way you guys are running the golf course.
Thank you.
Don't take anything I've said tonight as a derogatory concerning that. I just want to be extremely and exceedingly comfortable that we're doing the right thing fiduciarily for, and I hope that's a word that could be found in the Oxford-
Well, but you're talking, you're talking, as Dave pointed out, you're talking about extending something out 30 years from now, so there's another couple of weeks, another three weeks or so-
Right.
Won't, won't hurt it.
I, yes, absolutely.
So is there then a motion to table?
So made.
Do we need a specific, okay, second, do we need a-
No, it, it can be tabled generally, you do not have to have a specific date.
So we have a motion to table, and a second. A roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
President Protem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Motion carries. So we'll, we'll have staff get, with you guys, get some numbers and-
I'll just work through staff, and they'll coordinate with you, and we'll get you what we can, so. Thank you for your comments tonight, appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the time you put in.
Any other additional unfinished business? Any additional unfinished business? Yeah?
We've been discussing a variety of actions to be taken with regard to our response to Illinois's legalization of marijuana, the retail sale for recreational use. I would like to continue to move that forward so that at our first meeting in November, we can have an open discussion. And if members of the community want to participate and make comments, they could do that. But I believe that it would be in our interest to have the ordinances in, available for a specific review, comment, and vote at that meeting so that we can then make some level of determination as to where we're moving forward. So with that being said, I guess I'm looking for consensus from my brethren on the board here to direct staff to create the necessary ordinance changes, and in this particular, for the opt-out, as that seems to be the consensus that we had previously, along with, and again, it's not as time-sensitive, but any additional ordinances we wish to bring to bear and/or modify in light of recreational use of marijuana within the community.
For the November 5th meeting?
For the November 5th meeting.
Without objection from the board, we'll direct staff? I mean-
I, I think you can take a consensus from the board, if the, the board's willing to do that. This is not up for formal action tonight. You're not voting on an opt-out ordinance tonight. This is an informal poll of the board as to whether or not the village should opt-out of the sale of recreational cannabis, based on the results of this informal poll. Staff would bring, if it's, there's a majority in favor, staff would bring an ordinance to be formally voted on at the next, at the next meeting.
Anybody objecting to moving forward?
I would just ask each one individually.
How about I move forward?
Yeah, I have no objection.
Trustee Markwart.
No objection.
Okay, then-
No objection from this chair either.
Consensus to move forward. Okay. Any new business or communication?
It has come to my attention, and I don't think he'll mind now that he's residing in another realm, but Chet List, who is a pain in our butt, was quite the spokesman and advocate for his community for architectural improvements, passed away last week. I believe there'll be a funeral service later this week, potentially on Saturday.
Saturday.
But Chet was a, a frequent visitor to the board meetings, and his, his work will be missed by those who live in Greg's Landing for sure, because like I said, he was a strong voice for that community. And he'll be missed by myself personally. I always enjoyed listening to him and, and trading commentary with him.
Yeah, he always had great ideas and was always well-prepared, well-thought-out.
Very well-prepared.
Did his homework, yeah, he was always a joy to have him be.
Yeah, I, I concur. He, we built a pool and we, he saw my design like 18 times, made me change all the flowers that I was gonna put because they had to be a certain way, and I really appreciated that. We'll miss him for sure.
Yeah, the, trustee Markwart just handed me, the wake is Friday at Memorial Funeral Chapel, 3 to 8, and the funeral's Saturday at St. Mary Vernon at 10:30. Any other new business, communication? If not this, this Friday, at Viper's Alley is the District 73's-
Yes.
Education Foundation, Key to 73, their big fundraising event. So I just want to put in a plug for them. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion, is there, yes, no? Okay, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Now.
Right, thank you. I am requesting a motion for an appointment of President Protem for the committee of the whole meeting.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, I would like to ask that trustee Cook be named President Protem for the remainder of this committee of the whole meeting.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries. Committee whole is now called to order. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 17th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, any comments, questions, discussion? Can minutes be approved by an aye vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of approving those minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Second item is approval of the special committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 24th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So made, and just for the record, there were 61 people that spoke of that 94%. So I believe that's 57 or 54 were residents of Vernon Hills. Preponderance, again, in the 90%, spoke to the opt-out. That September 24th meeting was the special meeting that was held at Vernon Hills High School, and the minutes should reflect that. So-
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is request for village employee medical, dental, vision, life insurance renewal.
Thank you. I have joined you this evening to discuss the village's employee group health insurance renewal. Village staff worked very closely with Tom Duran of First Benefit Marketing, the village's insurance broker, to evaluate various insurance plans, including medical, dental, vision, and life insurance. If you remember from last year's medical renewal, the village saved a substantial amount over Cigna's medical renewal quote, and the village made the decision at that time to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield for a savings of 5% under the current rates at that time, which also include a substantial increase in the level of benefit coverage. Not only has the village seen an increase in the level of customer service and claims processing with Blue Cross, but also a decrease in the claims experience. We've been running less than 70% from December of 2018 through May of 2019. Blue Cross used that claims data, as well as claims data from Cigna for the 2018 plan year, which was nearly 150%. So those figures resulted in an initial quote from Blue Cross reflecting a 15% increase. With the market analysis from Tom Duran, Blue Cross eventually brought their renewal down to 8% over current rates. A couple of important items to note on the Blue Cross quote. Blue Cross offered to bring the medical renewal down an additional percentage point to 7% should the village also renew the dental plan. Additionally, 2% of that 7% increase is for taxes associated with the Affordable Care Act that are being reinstated for 2020. So in reality, the increase would be 5% with an additional 2% for those mandatory ACA fees. And that includes the health insurance industry fee, which helps fund federal and state marketplaces and exchanges. So many of the carriers were unable to provide competitive quotes on the medical, however, Cigna did quote a 5% increase on the medical, which does not include those ACA taxes. A huge difference between the Blue Cross plans and the Cigna plans is that for every dollar the village pays in premium to Blue Cross, 85 cents goes towards claims funding, 15% goes towards administrative fees. With Cigna, only 65% of that same dollar goes towards claims funding, 35% goes towards administrative fees. So that is in large part why we're seeing such a decrease in the claims experience, because there's a lot more money that's going towards the claims funding. There were also a large number of large claimants in 2018, which drove up that claims experience. Those cases have been closed, so that's been helping us as well. So of the roughly $128,000 annual increase that we would see on the medical, the village would pay about $83,000 of that, the employees and retirees would cover the balance of that increase. On the dental, Blue Cross quoted a 10% increase due to very high utilization of the plan during the current plan year. As mentioned a moment ago, Blue Cross did offer to bring the medical renewal down 1% should we renew both the medical and the dental, and that would more than offset the increase on the dental. In addition, Blue Cross has offered to provide a $20,000 wellness credit, and that would also help offset that cost. Those funds would be used to continue providing wellness programs to create a healthier workforce and continue to focus on reducing claim costs in an effort to bring down the premiums. So these programs include the flu shots, biometric wellness screenings, wellness seminars- healthy cooking demonstrations, dietitian services, and in the new plan year, these funds would hopefully allow the village to host onsite cancer screening for employees and their dependents. So of the roughly fourteen thousand dollar increase on the dental, the village would see about eighty-five hundred of that, employees and retirees would then cover the balance. Vision will enter the second year of a two-year rate guarantee. The market analysis on the village showed that Blue Cross offered the best rate with the greatest level of coverage. For the life insurance, Blue Cross has agreed to hold their current rates on the life insurance for the two thousand and twenty plan year, and these rates are competitive with the market. So we have developed a great relationship with Blue Cross, having all of our lines with them, having one point of contact. It has helped dramatically. It's the recommendation of village staff and Tom Duran with First Benefit Marketing that the village renews the medical, dental, vision, and life insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We look forward to the continued relationship with them, and therefore seeking motion from the board to direct staff to prepare an ordinance authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for medical, dental, vision, and life. Any questions?
Trustee Schultz.
When does we? When do we need to sign the contract, before December first?
Yes, so.
So we've got, because really the board can only direct the staff to prepare the necessary paperwork, we're gonna have to vote on this again in November, but that's plenty of time. That's why I asked early in, during our first board, our first, the village board meeting, as opposed to the committee, whether or not we needed to take action on this tonight. But we're well ahead of the game this time.
Yep, so we do plan to bring it to a vote at the November fifth meeting.
Beautiful. Again, another great job you did. It's greatly appreciated, because I'm looking at my own insurance, and I wish it was five percent. So, yeah, I have no problem with this, and I'll make the motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary contractual obligation documents to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Second. Motion a second, any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, a roll call please.
President Byrne. Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Protam Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Next item is request from Waterway Car Wash to amend ordinance two thousand three dash zero two five, approving an amendment to the special use permit, site plan, and landscape changes to the property located at eight sixty South Milwaukee Avenue.
Excuse me, thank you, I can give you a brief summary as the applicant walks up to the lectern. The changes relate primarily to the ingress and egress of the car wash, the egress being to the north, excuse me, the ingress to the north, the egress to the south. The three existing lanes entering into the car wash would remain. The northernmost lane would be dedicated to those customers purchasing a standard car wash. They would stay in the car after they've paid for the car wash, they stay in the car through the car wash. The inner two lanes would be dedicated to those customers purchasing a more advanced cleaning service. An attendant would take their car to the car wash, and the customer would wait inside the building. The vacuums, which are currently located on the north side, would be moved to the south. So now shifting to the south, when the cars come out of the car wash, they would be hand-dried. Those customers that would, that purchased the standard car wash would leave via a newly-installed exit lane that you can see in the upper left-hand corner of the screen. And then those customers that purchase a more advanced cleaning service, the attendant would take the car to one of ten finishing stations, and they would, depending on the level of service, would clean the inside of the car, vacuum, and do those kinds of services to the car. Once the car is completed, they'd then get the customer and bring him to the car, and they'd be done. The, the, given the proposed relocation of the vacuums from the north to the south, staff requested that a sound engineer do a sound analysis because of the joint, the noise that could be generated from the vacuums. The conclusion of that analysis was that there would be no additional sound created from relocating the vacuums to the south, and that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, the blower which serves the vacuums would be located within a building, so the only noise that would be generated would be from the nozzles themselves. And also, the current practice whereby the rims of the tires are cleaned by using compressed air, and the sound of the compressor, that would be eliminated. So the net result would be no increase in the sound, and we have a complete report from the sound engineer that confirms that. So for tonight, if the board feels that the site changes that I just described to you are appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance, amending ordinance two thousand three dash zero two five, amending the special use permit for the car wash, and also amending the site plan and landscape plan that was included as part of the car wash. I've got some other pictures that I could show you as well. This one shows the inbound lanes to the north, and that's to the right of the screen. This shows the ten finishing stations in the south that would be created. You'll also note that that fence there, that was a condition of approval of the original ordinance when Peacock Mobile was originally constructed, the board required that fence, that fence will remain. So again, staff is looking for that direction to prepare an ordinance, amending ordinance two thousand three dash zero two five, and the, the new owner representative is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? If there are no questions from the board, is there?
I'll be more than happy to provide a motion, direct staff to prepare the necessary ordinance and any other documentation required to approve this change.
Second.
We have a motion a second. If there are no other comments or questions, a roll call please.
President Byrne. Trustee Brown.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Protam Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I usually get paid by the word, but I'll, I'll go without it.
Uh, next item is the V-HAC Sports Turf Project Proposal.
Thank you very much. We have representatives from Vernon Hills Soccer Club and Sports Made Personal, they'll make their presentation. This has been presented to the board before, and the, the recommendation, or should the village board find it acceptable? What we're asking for is to move forward with a letter of intent, which would allow the contractor to move forward with a design. That would be if this project doesn't move forward, we would be potentially out of pocket by fifteen thousand dollars maximum, not to exceed. They would do a topo, design specs, and we would have that, we would own that information. Should the, the board concur with the general scope and conditions of the proposal, village council and staff would still work through the agreement, but some of the specifics, they're here to present.
Okay. Are there questions, comments from the board?
I'm Andrew Reback from the Vernon Hills Soccer Club.
Peter Kemp, Vernon Hills Soccer Club.
Chad Grun with S and P.
Do you guys have anything you want to add?
Nothing from our point that we wanted to add from the proposal we did last meeting.
Let me fill in a couple of additional details then. So since the last meeting, we went back and we talked to the Vernon Hills Park District in terms of is there a possibility of upfronting more money? There's seventy-five thousand dollars. They would upfront that year one, and we also have a commitment from the local soccer club that out of their three hundred thousand dollars, they will pay a hundred and fifty thousand of that upfront. Sports Made Personal has a little bit different financing scenario than the other two, so that hasn't been fully resolved, but that's a conversation that our attorney is having with them in terms of security and collateral. In, in terms of the dollar amounts, the dollar amounts of the project are fairly consistent of what we presented previously, and let me say what that is. So one million four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is the project cost. There are a couple of menu items that we'd like the board to consider. The two hundred and eight thousand dollar ask to the village does not include damage to the path, we estimate that might be another twenty-five thousand in addition. We do have to relocate the irrigation system because our existing six-inch irrigation system that goes all the way to fields five and six, the softball fields, is underneath the surface. We don't want that to happen, so that's another twenty-five thousand, have it relocated. And then there's some menu items in terms of, do we want a perimeter fencing around the facility, and that would be embedded in concrete? That's seventy thousand four hundred dollars. And then there's some netting, it says safety netting, roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's not for the safety, what it really is, if someone kicks a ball, it doesn't go over the fence, it's caught and dropped within the, the facility. One item we won't know unless we go through the engineering design is whether additional drainage pipe is necessary or not, and that's something that we don't know, but we would if we moved forward with that. So those total additional options are about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Should we select all of them, some of them we must, and that doesn't include a contingency. So I just want to be upfront in terms of our full exposure. There is opportunities that we could reach out and potentially obtain some grants to help us with this, but the, the lion's share of this project is being financed by the three gentlemen in, in front of us and the park district with the village's assistance after.
Trustee Takaoka.
I just want to say a few things, you know, upfront here, you know, regarding the gentlemen up here, especially Peter and Andrew, I've known them, you know, for, geez, since the inception of this program, actually when Kevin Atkinson started this program, and I, I don't think you can really understand the, not only their time they've put in for the last twelve years, but their wives, and this is all volunteer, and, you know, this really wouldn't, wouldn't come to fruition or even be even considered here without, you know, these gentlemen here. And the fact that they're willing to put up so much skin in this, you know, in, in this project really shows, you know, a huge commitment on their end, I mean, for really the future of, you know, the V-HAC and its utilization. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, you know, thank you guys, because it's always the same people that are volunteering and putting forth their time, and they've put in over a decade, so just wanted to make that known to the public.
Trustee Markwart.
I, I will definitely agree with it. Gentlemen, you pour your blood out on this, and as a former coach myself and stuff, I, my problem that I see is that the lack of help that you get from volunteers, and your efforts are by far unbelievable. I think with the AstroTurf, I'm sorry, I say it wrong, I'm old folk. So, but I, I think, I forget what I'm saying, I think will be an advantage for us. Mind you that when tournaments are played, how this village will also rake in rewards from the hotels, restaurants that are used, the stores, that the people come, that come from all over. I think, what was the farthest on the, one of the soccer tournaments, where, what's the farthest?
This past year was Phoenix, Arizona.
So I, I'm in favor of this very much.
If I may just add quickly to, a perfect example of what can happen, being outside this weekend, this weekend was nice, but our neighbors to the north, Libertyville, had to cancel their entire tournament. Obviously, we feel for them because that's a huge loss in income, not even income, just money that they have already spent. That happens to us as a soccer club, and we don't know how, you know, solvent, we can keep that going, so it happens. Again, the Saturday, Sunday were, were beautiful, but it was the rain from the week, especially on, yeah, weeks on Fridays, you know, obviously, we've been struggling with so many cancellations as well. I think as a, as a group here, we can all see the benefit.
Trustee Schultz.
A few questions, so I want, I want to get this right, we're up to four hundred thousand, our portion?
Yes.
Okay. We'll never make that up in, in tax revenues off of Jimmy John's and everything else. But that's, that's all right, this is a, this is kind of a, a long-term amenity. Hotel motel tax. I mean, that's kind of where we're headed with this, is that we're bringing in a lot of folks. Are we at the max on that right now, and can? I thought there was some changes that were being prescribed by the state legislature to allow for different uses of those funds versus just for convention and tourism.
I'd have to check if we are at the max and get back to you on that.
And the, the uses? Because I thought I heard something that, that broadened the scope, because if we can add more in that vein, I think that would make me feel a little bit better to help pay down our four hundred thousand dollar share. Bond or reserve? I'm assuming that because they're making progress payments and they're paying a premium that beats whatever we can do in the bond market and, and/or in our investment portfolio?
Also, Larry Necron and Mark discussed this, and with the, you know, one point five million, it's just the cost of issuing bonds versus, and, you know, interest rates right now, it's more feasible for us to, you know, assist.
And high school contribution? Have we pursued that?
We, we have, we talked to Brian initially.
Forget Brian, go right to the board president.
You know, so about six months to a year ago, they were not interested in the project with everything else that was going on. He did come back after last month's meeting to just clarify what ten, eleven, and twelve, the fields that we have in this proposal, have from a usage perspective. And in order for us to come up with these types of dollars, we had to program it as, as much as possible. So my last conversation with him was that not within this, not within these fields, but if they were having a change of heart, we could amend this and possibly go nine, eight, seven, one of the other fields, multiple fields, and he was having that conversation back with the principal and the.
My point here is, within this board, I'd like to see Mark pursue a conversation with Brennis Lee and Patrick Broody, Patrick being the president of the school board, Brennis Lee being the chief administrator slash superintendent, because this is a feeder program for their schools, and I think it would behoove them to make a contribution to whittle away at our four hundred thousand dollar share, so.
Trustee Brown.
From, from the perspective though of this, there wasn't enough room, there, there was no time for them to use it except for three thirty to four fifteen.
Right, but, but we're developing a future. Right, but we're developing future athletes for their programs.
Understood.
So it's not a direct but indirect use, therefore it would be an indirect contribution, which I would expect would be less than a direct contribution, but any contribution is always a welcome contribution.
Trustee Brown.
I just wanted to say that I also am in favor of the project. As a parent of a child that's in the soccer club, sometimes we have to cancel practices and then show up for a game, and we're not prepared, where other towns have the means to go practice at an indoor turf field. So I think this will benefit all the residents in Vernon Hills, not now, but in the future. So I'm in favor of it.
Trustee Oppenheim.
I was gonna say the same thing as my daughter just mentioned the other day, how many games they recently had to reschedule and practices, et cetera. But... And I concur with all of Craig's comments as well on all of your effort. It certainly hasn't gone unnoticed over the years. We really appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions though regarding the fencing, the perimeter fencing and the safety netting. I certainly understand the netting to collect the balls. Just at the game the other day, there was a ball that went far into the woods. It took a while to find that one. I'm curious about your opinion. Is the perimeter fencing in concrete something that you would prefer to see, or...
So there's a couple of advantages to that. Most complexes that have turf as a component of grass choose to fence the turf.
Just to protect it?
There's a couple of reasons, right? The protection is one, keeping riffraff out is two. I don't mean riffraff as, you know, unintended people as much as the nice father and son who don't think that shooting off a rocket is gonna leave a hole in something that's not gonna grow.
Right.
Is not an uncommon act.
Okay.
So for those couple of reasons, it helps kind of insulate a lot of that risk.
I think one other aspect of it is with the fencing, I think groups would look more to renting the field. I think sometimes you get the groups playing games that I don't know, but I don't believe...
Oh, you think they're just showing up and...
Yes, correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Instead of paying the rental fee that is required. So I think there, without the fencing, there is money lost to the village and park.
That happens all the time. I mean, I have conversations with Ken almost weekly on people that are on the fields that don't have a permit, even though there's signs all over, you know.
Okay.
Cameras were talked about, you know, potentially having a camera, possibly having, you know, the police department just making a loop in there every so often, but they do use it.
And I know we talked about marketing opportunities. Having the fence there gives you that opportunity or us that opportunity, whichever.
Like GLSA, they have signs of businesses, and, you know, I know it's not coming... It's not free of charge, so is this a chain link fence around the front?
Yeah, it would be matched to design the chain link fence of the baseball fields. It'll look identical so that the facility feels...
Whole vinyl coated.
I'm pretty comfortable that there'd be a lot of businesses that'd be more than willing to want to put their signs there. Actually, I know someone who, big medical entity, that I would approach, you know. So, you know, like I said, at GLSA, they have it all over the place now, and they have businesses with signs hanging on their fence, so I think that'd be a way to help offset some of the, you know, the cost to the village.
Yeah, we've had a policy though that we don't do that. That would be a policy change that we'd need to look at first.
Okay.
That we've always entertained.
Right, couldn't you stamp it on the turf? Something like that?
Yes.
Would it be permanent or something that could be removed if someone were...
Both options.
Oh, really? All right, so... And then, you know, I know we brought this up before, Dave, eventually this grass needs to be replaced one day, and the cost of that again? Roughly ballpark budgetary? Is it greater than four hundred thousand?
It is. It is in that ballpark.
Okay, so you know what? At this point...
It's a no-brainer.
The four hundred K's being spent either way, except we're gonna get something more long-term and probably...
Well, and as I said, all sports that are now doing travel and play outdoors...
Correct.
This is...
Yeah.
I mean, about the only outdoor sport that's not...
Right.
So far hasn't seemed to be smart enough.
So I just want to make sure that people know we're not just spending four hundred thousand dollars because there is, you know, this is... Eventually, this investment needs to be made in this community, so we have the opportunity where someone is collaborating with us.
Correct. Yeah, and it's just...
Absolutely, so...
It's a direction that we need to be headed.
Financially.
To your point, these fields were installed in two thousand and one.
Okay.
And what's the average lifespan?
It's a light one.
Well, the high school restolium field, they installed theirs in the same timeline, and they replaced theirs into sports fields two thousand and eleven, I think it was. So they thought that their football field was approximately ten years, and we're, you know, we're approaching twenty.
You start to lose the crown, just snow, rain, use, the crown goes away, and you start getting water collection.
And I like the board's comment and their comment in terms of usability. We had record rainfalls in May and then the two weeks into June. The difficulties in them scheduling their games and the impact on the users is substantial.
Yeah, it guarantees playability. I mean, that's the biggest reason it's the way everything's going now, which maybe someday the Bears will figure out. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
All right.
Do we have a motion to direct?
We need to direct staff to prepare the necessary...
I think it's a motion to direct staff to bring back a letter of intent to the board for approval at the next meeting. And the letter of intent will flush out some more of the detail relative to this program.
Okay, is there...
I'd like to make that motion to direct staff.
Motion a second. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, a roll call please.
President Protem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving forward.
Yeah, next item is adjourned. Were we going to... We forgot to ask at the end of the regular meeting. I didn't think so, that's why. Okay. All right, is there a motion to adjourn committee? Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.